And Amelia, I think with everybody's here that's going to be here except for Mike Overton, and he should be here in a few minutes. So if you wanted to go ahead and start, I'm sure that would be fine. We've got two items. Ernest, we've got enough here to make decisions anyway.
It looks like item number one is a resolution for the, to settle a condemnation lawsuit, and I will turn that over to Ernest.
Thank you. This is only one of a handful of cases we have left. This is on the Harbor project. I think we made reference to this earlier. This is a full taking. We settled two of them on the west side of the interstate. This is actually on the east side of the interstate at, it's on 40th Street, and the city's estimate of just compensation was $115,000. Property owners offered to settle for a total of $133,000, which is an additional $18,000. They've had it appraised and visited with the mayor, and we agreed to bring this forward for consideration. Mr. Lyles here, if you have any questions. Actually, this is, we have six pending cases that we have left, and this is one of the six.
Are there any other questions?
So Ernest, so we get an appraisal. We did appraisal land, and then the property owners counter appraisal, which is kind of the standard. Is our appraisals just that much off, or what is it?
Well, there could be legitimate differences of opinion. There can be time factors involved. This case was actually filed in 2020. As I mentioned, on the other two cases that we settled that were full takings, we gave the property owners plenty of time to vacate the property. This was actually filed in November of 2020. And of course, we gave them time to, we're not going to file it and kick them out of their house the same day. And I believe this is actually a better settlement than the other two cases that were full takings as well, that were on the other side of the interstate. Relatively speaking, going from $115,000 to $133,000 is not drastic, in my opinion.
So what's usually the timeframe we give for counter appraisal? Is there a timeframe?
There's not really a set timeframe. My office only gets the cases that the acquisition staff is not able to work out a resolution to the case. Then we have to file in court to get the order of possession, so we can get the property we need, and then we can, you know, resolve the monetary issue later. And that's what we did in this case. So there's no set timeframe that they have to get an appraisal, no.
So was our appraisal done in 2020?
These cases on these projects have been affected by COVID as well. There are several cases that were filed. We had some filed in 2018. This is the 2018 Bond project, and they got pushed because of COVID. So that's part of the delay as well.
When, I think Amelia asked when the appraisal was on this one.
Yeah, I've got it right here. It was done in May of 20.
Okay.
May 21st of 2020, to be exact.
Well, with the market increase, the state market, I can understand.
Yeah, and in this case, it's probably the most dramatic example I've seen of the increase we had in property values at that time, and are still having. Mr. Garcia, when he, this was a 1,300 square foot house on half an acre of property. The city appraised it at $115,000. He was given $115,000. When he went out to buy a replacement house, he bought a 1,081 square foot house on less than two tenths of an acre, and it cost him over $165,000.
Steve, you might, you or Ernest either won, you might talk about when it's a complete taking, and people are being forced to move. There's a little more.
That's right. So this case really comes down to, so, you know, what a jury's going to hear is, just the way these projects work, Mr. Garcia's given a $115,000 check. He has to pay off his existing mortgage. He'd lived in the house 23 years. He has to pack up at his own expense. He has to go out into the marketplace and buy a house at his own expense. By the time he was done, he had spent over, by the time you go through refinancing and closing costs and appraisal on a new house and moving expenses, it was over $170,000. And it's for a smaller house on half the land. So he didn't go out and buy an extravagant house and profit from this at all. In fact, I feel like the answer to the question with appraisals, appraisals are always looking backwards. And so they're trying to find a 1,300 square foot house on five tenths of an acre to compare it to. Well, he may be looking at cells that are two years old, you know, that are backward looking. And then when the house is taken, he's in a real marketplace, has to pack up and move, and so he spent about $170,000. So he's asking for $133,000. So I think that's really the compelling part of, you know, part of this case is that he got uprooted, had to move at his own expense, and then had to go out and buy a smaller house that cost a whole lot more money. And that was just the reality. Appraisals are theoretical, but that is what happened. I mean, that is undisputed that that is what happened to Mr. Garcia.
Yeah. Just to go back to my question, didn't deal with this in depth. It was just our appraisals versus, you know, other appraisals, timeframes, and are we, are we just that far off, or are we, is it just the way the market is just dictating those appraisals at those times?
Well, and y'all only see the ones that don't agree with the appraisal, too.
Well, that's true.
So, and there are a lot of them that do, so.
Yeah, everything I read on here is easily settled with no additional money. So y'all can see those.
I move forward this with recommendation for approval. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Our second item on the agenda is a discussion on purchase of police vehicles and equipment using the American Rescue Plan Act funds. We have Chief Campbell here to, congratulations.
Thank you.
To discuss, to discuss this.
So what we're asking for is $100,247.84 for vehicle equipment. That does not include any computer mounts. We're looking for another option because the ones we've been using on the MDTs we have now are no longer available. Also, our MDTs are getting really old, and we need to start looking at options for replacing those. But we're not prepared to talk about those at this time. And the vehicles, you gave us permission as counsel to order those vehicles during the summer. And believe it or not, they've actually all come in already, except for one of them. We have 11 of them delivered already and one pending. But we need the funding for those vehicles approved, what method to get them paid for. And I think Cody has been looking into, has been able to use ARPA funds to fund that, but he's still waiting on them to give us permission on the resolution.
Kobe, you want to give us an update on that, or Cody? Cody's here, too.
Cody will be able to give a more specific of an update with DRS and how we're having to proceed with this. Counsel had given permission last year for the police department to go ahead and order the vehicles. And at the time, there was such a delay that we thought it would be in 2022, whenever we would get those, but they actually got them sooner than that. With DRS, we are going, I would say, far above and beyond to make sure we stay compliant. Because we're hearing stories of cities who have spent without being compliant, and we don't want to end up in that situation. So it does take time. So we're telling department heads, if you have ARPA requests or things that need to be purchased from ARPA, you need to get that to us, so we have plenty of time to review it and get it to council and get resolutions. So we thought DRS would have the resolutions last week, get them in before the deadline for the agenda, but they didn't have those done yet. So we're hoping that the council will give us permission to bring those actual resolutions to you at City Council next week. But the funding is there. We just have to make sure this is all done correctly. So the equipment is something that we're adding to this resolution. We gave permission last year to get the vehicles, but now we need your permission to outfit those with the proper equipment. And we can put all that in the same resolution for you.
So we don't know for sure that that resolution, we hope we'll have that resolution by next Tuesday night.
I'll let Cody talk about that a little bit.
Because I think the council, the committee will need to know what sort of action to take.
What we can expect, the one hang up right now is that they're looking at the, on the vehicle side, the state contract, state bid contract, that we can buy vehicles through from the dealerships at a set price. DRS is ensuring that the state followed the federal procurement procedures when they got those contracts and had them put in place. And so I was on the phone today as well with the state, and state's working on it, and DRS is working on it. DRS thinks they have found the information they need, waiting for confirmation from the state. That's what we got, is what it is. And then, once they have that, then they'll, they'll be able to forward the resolutions to us with recommendation. And it's going to follow a similar procedure of what we did with the, previously, we're going to use loss revenue calculation to pay for the vehicles and the outfitting of the vehicles.
Okay. So if the council, if the committee wanted to, they could forward this with a recommendation for approval pending, pending the resolution that would be brought to council?
Yes.
Or you could just vote, you could forward it with no recommendation and wait to see the resolution, either way. But we would, we would ask you to take some sort of action on this, so we could move it forward.
On this bid, bid you are here that says that the winning bid was from Dana Safety for $100,247. And then look at the bid opening. It's a, it's a different number?
That is correct. That's because they had $2,000 worth of equipment on there that we didn't need. So they took it off and sent us a new one. But during bid opening, that was actually their bid. It was still the lowest bid. But the actual price quote that's in there is the correct one. They had some Siren equipment in there twice, so they had to take it out.
So that, pending ARPA funding, would that be a part of the resolution?
I'd say pending the resolution, and the resolution will, it will show that ARPA funding will be the revenue source for this. We just don't have the resolution yet. And, Kobe?
If y'all remember, when we did this before the end of the year, when we did the bonuses, there was some bouncing back and forth that DRS was still trying to get information from the final rule from the Treasury. The Treasury finally came out with that recently, within the last, what, couple of weeks. So they actually have a little more direction now. So it has to be worded the correct way, where we do this with lost revenue, and, but that will all be stipulated in this resolution.
We're trying to do this so we don't have to come back, like we did with the bonuses.
And with the final rule, hopefully that won't be the case anymore.
So how would the motion be? A motion to forward a new resolution?
You could forward, forward the, you could forward the item to City Council with a, with a recommendation for approval pending the resolution that will be presented and to be in your packet. It might be cleaner, actually, just to forward it with no recommendation. And then, when it goes in your packet, you'll have the resolution.
Yeah, I'm moving forward it with no recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, Kevin, are you, are you making that motion?
Yes.
Can you, yes.
Second, Kevin's.
So, so I had a question. How many cars was that?
Frank's making his way back to the mic, Jeff.
It is 12. 11 of them have actually already come in, but there's 12 vehicles.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that answer. 11, but what?
11 of the vehicles have come in, but there's actually 12.
So there's another one that's on the way, or what?
Yes, there's one on the way. It'll be here in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. And then, congratulations, by the way, Frank.
Thank you.
What was the thing that you or somebody said about, that we didn't need something about computer or something?
We didn't order computer mounts with that bid because they're not available anymore for the old computers we have. Can't get the mounts to vehicles anymore. So we're looking at other options to come up with an idea and how to fix that problem. We're not prepared to ask for anything on that yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to forward item number two to council with no recommendation. Any other questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That will be forwarded. Item number three is a presentation and discussion for Upskill, Upskill Program, presented by Jeff Webster, President and CEO of Accelerate Foundation.
Amelia, before Jeff starts, we've been in discussions for a long time, actually, about when we, when we knew the rescue plan was going to be available, those funds were going to be available. And, you know, we've talked a lot as a council and in the mayor's office about really trying to find ways to spend this money wisely and that will have a last, make a lasting impact on Springdale, a lasting positive impact. And this presentation tonight, we're sort of in the same boat as we were with the last item, in that DRS has not yet put together the resolution, or at least come to how exactly how it would need to be stated. But the intention would be to, to deal with this, after this presentation, to deal with it also with rescue plan money. And, and so with that said, Jeff, Jeff Webster's here from, from Accelerate, and Jeff's been very involved. He has been mostly involved with this, and several others that I know he'll mention. And so Jeff, with that, I'll turn it over to you. And, and council, we'll have, we can make hard copies of this presentation, certainly for any of you and for any council members that aren't here tonight. So Jeff, it's all yours.
All right, great. You hear me okay then, right?
Yeah, I'll speak right into it, but we can hear you fine.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, first of all, thank you for the opportunity, and likewise, council folks, thank you as well. Yeah, my name's Jeff Webster. I'm the CEO of Accelerate Foundation, so you'll know us perhaps more as Endeavor Foundation, as we were kind of throughout the years, et cetera. So I'm here, I represent kind of a lot of different folks. I got Carol Morales, who is President of Upskill. Got Dr. Ricky Tompkins here from Enwak. Dr. Rollins is in route. And Shannon Hendricks, as an example, from Arkansas Children's, the CEO there, was going to be here as well with us, but unfortunately tested positive for COVID. So we're in those times these days. So I'm going to walk you through this, and I can talk pretty fast, and I'll try and talk real fast, just because I know you're tight on time. There's a lot of information here, but it's going to talk to you about, I think it's real important for you to see the context of what this is all about. As Mayor Sprouse said, it's an initiative region-wide that's been underway now for probably seven to eight months. The council would say, or have said, in their mind, this is the biggest collaboration since the airport, as far as amount of people that are involved with this. And you're going to see this as I work through, walk through this. So really, the purpose of this quickly, it'll, what does a governor have to do this, with this? Back in June, there was a council meeting, the annual meeting. The governor was here, talked about the importance of workforce development, kind of challenged our region to keep doing more. There were a lot of good things underway. And right after that, then we announced the launching of Upskill, and you're going to hear about that in a second. So I'll talk a little bit about the governor piece of this. I'm going to take you through what is this regional initiative, what's the program itself, how does it work, and then bring it kind of specifically home to Springdale, kind of what the ask is and what the implications are to Springdale also. So this is kind of, sums up the need on multiple points. You know, the governor talked about, as we know, any aspiring or growing country or state, as far as the key to economic development, as we all know, is better and better skills for people. If you want to attract battery companies or electric car companies and this stuff, we need to have better and better skills. So he talked a lot about that and how we needed to be doing more. So that's kind of point one. Secondly, there's this whole healthcare transformation going on. And I'll tell you, as an aside, I think this really helps put Springdale even more at the center of what's going to be going on here in Northwest Arkansas. You'll see that in a second. But anyway, that whole transformation, very much geared around especially the specialty fields, oncology, endocrinology, et cetera, making sure that we have the right types of doctors here, et cetera. I'll touch on that. And also making sure that we keep more and more of our med students staying here as doctors. When they go to do a residency program, there's not enough residency slots here in Northwest Arkansas. They leave the area. And once they do that residency, unfortunately, they don't come back. So their focus has been on that. But while they're focusing on that, here comes the next point. Over 1,000 openings every year as far as healthcare jobs, great jobs, high-paying jobs that are needed here desperately, and you'll see what I mean by that here in a second. And then you have thousands of people that have been impacted by COVID. And we all know that. So you've got people that could use a better job, a different job, et cetera. So you're going to see the workforce exists, the jobs are there. We just need the right kind of program that could train them. And I'll tell you, as we dove into this as a foundation, then we went and saw the colleges and the technical institute and said, you guys have a lot of room, right? Well, not so much. They're at max capacity. So then you sit there and go, then how are we going to unlock this whole thing if we don't deal with that? So this page kind of looks like, golly, he's walking in here with a big bunch of problems. But the good news is, we've had six, eight months of amazing collaboration going on across the region to deal with these things. And that's what you're going to see as I walk through this. This page, we just know there's been lots of growth. It's a page from the council. But if you look at that future growth going forward, they'll say, technical skills, technical skills, more and more and more are going to be needed if we're going to support the growth in the area. This page is rather interesting. If you look at everything, those percentages from bachelor's degree on up, it's about two-thirds of our workforce in Northwest Arkansas has less than a bachelor's degree. So the point isn't to get everybody to a bachelor's degree. The point is, there's room for thousands and thousands, in fact, 200,000 people on that right-hand column with that, to move up. So this is about, this whole program is about non-traditional students, where we have thousands and thousands that have the ability to move up, they just maybe haven't had the same opportunities that the rest of us may have had. So that's what it's geared around. The importance of, of this, this page also is, they're people from Arkansas, they want to live in Arkansas, they don't want to leave Arkansas, their families here in Arkansas. And, and some of those other problems that we've had is, like we said, other, a lot of conventional students go to U of A, great school to go to, and a lot of out-of-state students come in, great value as well, especially in neighboring state, and they turn around and go back to Dallas. And all of a sudden, the nurses that just got trained, they leave our area. So this is about, how do we leverage the talent that we have here? We just got to get the right skills. So we announced at that meeting in June, the launch of Upskill, and I'm going to take you quickly through this, what this is. The initial seed dollars really came from Walton Family Foundation, put in a million and a half. Our foundation put in a million and a half to launch this thing. I kind of stood there on the stage in June and said, all right, we're going to launch this, we're going to have 100, the first 100 students in this program. We didn't have a website, we didn't have technology, we didn't have the financial model, we didn't have the CEOs of the hospitals on board, we didn't have the educators on board, we didn't even have the team, Carol and team hired. But if you kind of know our foundation, we said, well, that's not going to stop us. We're going to do this. So last week, we rented out a building. We had the first 100 students there with their families. Eric Pinalto, CEO of Mercy, spoke. Dr. Rollins spoke. It was tremendous as far as what we have underway under this. Yes, the team's hired, everything else I just said is in place. So what is this thing? What is Upskill itself? What it really does, and let me start by saying this, over in 2019, Dr. Jorgensen at Enwak and Mike Harvey at the council, they contacted us and said, hey, would we be part of trying to figure out a stronger, and understand this stronger model for educating and raising up and building workforce here in Arkansas modeled off of Quest in Texas? So we spent a lot of time understanding what is this model. So Project Quest started in San Antonio. It's existed for now 29 years, expanded and replicated in Austin, Houston, San, El Paso, Rio Grande Valley, over into Tucson, et cetera. But it's a program that really, for non-traditional students, brings the pieces of that Venn diagram together, brings the employers in as far as what are the key jobs here? Let's make sure we get pointed towards the right things. Let's make sure that there's mentors in place. And let's make sure that they know right from the get-go that they're going to have to pay a third of the cost of this program. And yes, they will, and yes, they're on board, and I'll take you through that in a second. But it brings the employers together. It brings the educators together as well. A lot of different collaborations. Fortunately, all three of our main educators here, in this case, at Healthcare, have their sweet spot, but it brings them together to do the physical education, if you will. Then over on the orange, it brings together the whole health and human service sector. So a lot of these people are, you know, a mom, a single mom that has two kids and is sitting there going, how do I go into one of these programs? I might need some social service support, or maybe they have teenagers and kind of, I won't be able to study, I got some stuff going on, I need help. So what we do here is, y'all know our organization Hark, and we're able to leverage Hark and bring that in. And I'll tell you, when the folks in Texas, and you should know, we met with all five CEOs of those cities I just talked with, their CFOs went through their financials, they gave us their job descriptions, they gave us their operating manual, they gave us all their interview guides, et cetera. And then we even used one of their former COOs to help us get this whole thing started. So know that this is not just, we've got an idea, let's try this. This is proven model, worked for decades, and we've said we're going to adopt and then adapt it, because we're a little different up here, and we'll do things differently. But when they saw what we could leverage from Hark, they're like, you guys are 10 years ahead of us. So we've got a tremendous health and human service sector, and we know how to bring that in. So Upskill just sits at the middle of this thing. It's really, Carol's team is just Carol and three others, but it brings those three things together, if you will. And it does what's in the bottom right, the coordination, the management, the career navigation, coaching, and I'm going to show you a bit more on what I mean by this. So what drives this whole thing is these folks, classically, they just haven't had educational access. They don't have the same opportunity that we all grew up with. They're likely going to be first-generation college students, so they don't have parents that, that confirm, hey, you can do this, that champion for them, et cetera. And remember, they might be 35 years old now with a couple of kids and a single mom going, can I really do this? How would I even start? I wouldn't even know who to contact, because they're out of the school system now, and they're not sure where I even start. So the big thing, although the other things sound more important, it's that educational access. It gets them financial support. So it, it's going to cover their tuition, their books, their fees, so all of the training costs are covered, number one. But then on the social service side, it's also bringing in, do they need help with childcare? If they live a little further out, maybe they need transportation help. So it's tailored, and we sit down with every one of these people. We have a life budget, if you will, as well as the school budget, and work through where do they have gaps and where they need support, and then we pull in via Hark, that social service sector. Then the career navigators at the center of this, again, Carol's team, this is, what does it mean to be a great employee? So we sit down with Mercy and Northwest Health, what does that mean to you guys, anyway? And every week, they're going through those classes as well. It's this VIP classes, Vision Initiative Perseverance, how to communicate, how to resolve conflict, how to manage your money, how to be a great employee. So it's teaching them those skills. And then, here we go, collaboration. We're pulling in Whole Health Institute. They have a great program called Take Charge of Your Life. I won't slow down on what that is, but you can tell by just the name of it, that gets incorporated in this, for these folks as well. So it's for these kind of folks. I won't read all these words on the page, but at the end of the day, I mean, people wake up, and it's real interesting, as we talk with the different councils, the mayors, the JPs, et cetera, it's like maybe two steps removed. Somebody knows this person. Could be their own, somebody in their family, et cetera, but I know what you're talking about. They're sitting here at 25 going, where do I go now? And I'm like stuck for the rest of their life. Well, no, they're not, because this is what this program is all about. So we said, let's focus, let's start. Where do we start? We start in healthcare. It's, it's one of our biggest industries, fastest-growing industries. And if you look at the little box over on the right, at the end of the day, what that really means is, with six phone calls, I could get these CEOs on board, and I did. And I didn't even get through as much as I've gone through on this presentation right now, and they're, we're in. If you saw the article in the Gazette two weeks ago, they're having to pay three times the traditional wage of a nurse, just to get traveling nurses in here, et cetera. So of course, they'll be on board with this thing. But by starting with healthcare, we'll go to IT, we'll go to the trades, we'll go elsewhere as we expand on this, but we could quickly mobilize and get people on board. So this page, in fact, this whole presentation, Mayor Sprouse was at, Mayor Sprouse, we probably had close to, if I call you the CEO of the city and the others that, we had just under 20 CEOs all together in this room, in terms of how do we come together. This page was from Ryan Cork of the council. We lose close to $1 billion annually just for outmigration of healthcare for people going to Cleveland Clinic, MD Anderson, et cetera, over to Tulsa because we don't have things. We lose close to a billion dollars annually just for outmigration of healthcare for people going to Cleveland Clinic, MD Anderson, et cetera, or over to Tulsa because we don't have things here. COVID exposed it worse. And then you hit the educational facilities, they're tapped out already. And then you see this, thousands of openings. And if we don't address this, we're going to have a big issue on our hands. I'll quickly tell you this little story too, because it's super relevant on this. Napa Northwest Arkansas Pathology Associates, they provide pathology support, so any tissue samples for all the hospitals. And then every hospital has to have a medical examiner, an independent medical examiner federally licensed. So they all have this and Napa fills that for every hospital in Northwest Arkansas. This guy, Lucas Campbell, calls me and says, I need to tell somebody what's going on here. It, he said, I have this vantage point, none of the rest, no one else has this, I see them all. And we are struggling even to keep people employed and staffed, et cetera, in these labs. And someone told me to call you Webster. And so, you know, here we are as far as somebody needs to do something about this. So again, this need is real, this is the council talking this. The next page at that meeting Mayor Sprouse was at, this was Eric Pinalto saying, you know everything Webster just said? This is real, he's not just making this stuff up. It's a big issue, COVID's made it worse. But we've got collaborations going on across this for profit, nonprofit hospitals, the, the universities and colleges and and institutions, NWTI working together. And they're going to support this strategically and financially operationally, I'll show you that in a second as well. These are the kind of jobs we're talking about. We've started with eight main jobs that you can see at Upskill N W A dot com. But they, we, we sat down with those six main leading healthcare organizations and the three educators and said, okay, what are the priorities? We got them all aligned in collaboration across that front, so they're not arguing or something. What are the priorities for you versus you versus you? Because Carol needs to know how many of these people to put in the program by type in terms of what they need. So we got great collaboration across all that, so we could go and get these people brought in. Well, then we get to this point, which starts to get more specific even for Springdale. So I first sat down with Dr. Rollins, I'm like, okay, so if we can figure out the program part, like you guys can bring on the students, right? And he's like, no way, we're already maxed out right now. And he pulled out that drawing and said, this is something that we need to build here at NWTI. And you guys, of course, know where it is. And he'll be here shortly and he can answer questions on this. This is a $10 million facility, it's a 50,000 square foot facility. And if you think about the healthcare sector where we start, it's kind of like a, a triangle or a pyramid. NWTI makes, makes, but but graduates the certificate programs, which is the most of what's needed out there. So they really are the foundation of this whole thing. And this is paramount that we get this built. So this is $10 million part of the whole program. Then when we sat down, we said, okay, great, but what about RNs? Because RNs principally, the, the associate degree RNs, they come from N WAC. It's one of the, if not the best in the state and one of the best in the country. And so when we sat down with Ricky and others and they're like, all right, so we're maxed out. And we said, well, we need to essentially come close to doubling this the next year. There's like, there's no way we can do this. So then they got creative, started thinking about this. But as they sat down and looked at where should they expand, it's what they've already built here in Springdale, they need to expand that. It's 11,000 square foot expansion, it's a $5 million expansion to basically come close to doubling the amount of output of RNs into the region as well. So I'll come back to this in a second. So what this whole thing does, and this is again coming out of Texas. And it's, it's kind of why people like this, because almost no matter what side of the aisle you might say, you, you see this on. On one side, it's about helping people, it's about growing their, their household income up to this 80% AMI level or higher. And or their individuals going up by 15,000 a year. I can tell you, it's going to be more than 15,000 for the people at Springdale, and I'm going to show you that here in a second. The generational effect on this, because remember, the, down there in Texas, we're going to do the same. You track these people kind of forever, they've tracked these people for 25 years, what job do they get next? And the next one, the next one. Oh, by the way, what happened to their families? And we're going to do the same thing and track all this stuff. So what they found is kind of the, the average person, non traditional student, only 45% of their family goes on to further education. If they're in this program, it's closer to 70%. And the graduation rate pushes into the 90% range of people that are in these programs. Then you can get into the, other people like it of show me the money. If we're going to make an investment, is the money going to come back to home? So without going way into detail on this, it's a tool called Implan. It's what all of the economic development offices, Mike Preston down in Little Rock, they all use the same tool. We sat down with UT Austin as far as how they used it, how they applied it. And when you look at what we're planning to do here, that's the kind of implication that we would see across Northwest Arkansas overall. So then what does this look like? Where's the ask and then show me what it means for Springdale? So if I start with this and slow down on the center part of this, it's $15 million, 10 millions, 10 million to build on the facility at NWTI. And a $5 million expansion on the, the Springdale campus of N WAC. Where do the dollars come from? Well, let's start with Jeff's up here advocating this thing. So let's start with Accelerate Foundation. We are, I've committed to put in the first $5 million into this. So the first $5 million is coming from us on that philanthropy line. The other $5 million, we're pretty close with the other philanthropy groups, kind of up north, you might say. Confident that the other $5 million will come together there. We've met multiple times with the state, we feel confident that we've got $2 million coming from the state. So on the infrastructure side, there's two pieces there. There's a Washington County piece and there's an ask of Springdale. Washington County Coram Court has already voted and approved that million dollars, I'll talk about program in a second, from Washington County. So the ask from Springdale is $2 million to help that infrastructure support. And again, I mean, you've got expansion of the core, the core part of this whole pyramid happening therefore in Springdale. So that's on infrastructure. When you get to program, this is again, support from the tuition side, et cetera. The first $3 million in the middle, again, a million and a half from our foundation, a million and a half from Walton Family Foundation. Going to go off every 10 minutes, I'm sorry. So then let's talk about the employer part. So again, the employers pay a third of the cost of the program. So that 3.2 million dollar commitment, depending on if it's certificate, two year, or some of these are four year degrees. We've got all the CEOs on board on that commitment, so that 3.2 is there. The other 1.7, without getting into this technical part, the, the, the educational institutions need support as far as what's called adjunct professors. Tuition won't cover all of that. And I sat down again with Larry, Eric, you, you guys are going to have to cover this or this isn't going to happen. So they said, okay, collectively, we'll make that 1.7 million dollars happen across five years as well. So that's where that 4.9 comes from on the employer side. Which then brings us to the local government piece. So this is what we did, it's pretty straightforward. And we looked at the, the ARPA funds, we can talk about the, the recent ruling. And yes, this absolutely for schools applies, absolutely for these educational programs apply. But your, your folks will go through that, Mayor Sprouse. So what we did is we simply looked at the federal allocation that came out to the counties and the cities. The big numbers went to the counties, as we all know, because the county allocation was based on all of the headcount of everybody in the county, including Springdale and Fayetteville, et cetera. So that's why you see the big number with Benton County and Washington County. And then you, then the, the other money came much more based on your CBDG calculations and or poverty level, however you want to say that. We simply then took the next column to the right, we took 4% of what everybody was allocated on the program side. So you can see that, that piece of the ask from Springdale is the 884. And then on the capital side, again, to make this happen, Washington County has already committed that one. So Washington County has already voted for their 2.9. So the ask of Springdale is 2 million for the building and 800,000 as far as the program support. So that's the 2.8 million. Importantly, there was a little confusion at that big meeting I referenced as far as, well, you know, I wasn't here. So these purple dogs versus red dogs and all this kind of stuff that y'all know, well, I, I didn't live this. But um, all of this kind of stuff was kind of going on in a fun way. But to be clear, Springdale dollars go towards Springdale residents. So if there's a person, you know, those dollars aren't going to pay for a person in Bentonville or something like that. We're very good at keeping these money straight and we can talk as much as you like, if you have questions on our ability to do that as well. So that's how that works. Let me just talk this, if, a lot of you know our capabilities analytically, especially like around Hark. This is literally, and this changes like every day, as people come in and apply, we can track who's coming in. We know who they are, we know their zip code, we know the whole nine yards, as well as race, ethnicity, gender, family type, et cetera. So we know all these as far as folks coming in. And you can see, it's interesting, you know, Northwest Arkansas is 18% people of color. We kind of had a goal of 25% people of color. Carol, I want to say we're at 49% people of color as far as people coming in and applying for the program. When they apply for the program, no, this isn't just, oh, well, someone's going to pitch them some scholarship money. I mean, it is pretty exhaustive, both on Carol's team and even the individual of coming in. They have to go through what's called Accuplacer to see where do they, they have the prerequisites or not for a class. But then we, we borrowed this stuff from Texas, they go through and just, they're testing for grit, perseverance. Why does this matter? You know, what's it mean to you? What's it mean to your family? All of that. And then there is a commitment process they go through and they sign a soft contract, but they commit to stay with that employer for two years. A big deal to those employers and, and why they are so supportive of this. But we can look at kind of what this looks like across Springdale, et cetera. We can slice the data, as you know, we can do if you've looked at our Hark data. And then this is just an example of bringing a Hark plan to them. Again, we've got hundreds of different providers out there that we bring to the table to make sure that they've got what they need. And remember, I like what Texas said, you know, the career navigators, they're kind of holding them by the hand, bringing them through the program. But they got them by the hand. And if they have to crank the hand behind the back and keep them on track, and yes, it's raining, but you got to get the class or any of those kind of things. They're good at just kind of the tough love or whatever a person needs in that sense. And then this page is real interesting. So rather than doing the complex version of this, we step back and simply said this. Well, and this is screened specifically for Springdale. But if you look at these people that are coming in and applying for the program, we know who they are, we know what they, where they currently work, we know how much money they currently make. We know what program they applied for, we know what those programs pay. So the blue is what they currently make. And as they graduate, there's, their, their income will upscale, if you will, by the green piece. So if you look in the upper right there, they currently make on average about 21,000, they'll go up by about 24,000. So, so if you take the 23,000 that they go up, this is across the five year program. And then look at how much the, the, the request is on the program side of 884. The Springdale residents in this program will see 7 and 1/2 million dollars coming back as far as increased income. You can get into, and that eight to one return on investment, if you run through the complex models, every city in Texas sees 10 to 20 to one return on investment. So we just did the simple version of this. And the, the interesting thing is, we're going to have five years to see, does this work? Because we're going to track all this stuff. So it, it's kind of interesting that here comes a pandemic, we get dollars that none of us expected, we had problems none of us expected. But we can use part of this to help the community in such a, a robust way. And then we can step back, because I keep asking myself, why would this go on for decades in, in those cities? It's because it works, it, because it works for the individual, it works for the sectors they're trying to help. And for others, it's kind of like, show me the money and they can track the return on investment. There's story after story after story. And I can't read these without tears, I'll tell you every time. Because this is, it's not about us, it's not about our foundation. It's about what it does for these people and their families. And I'll tell you, when you read these, so many of these stories, it's just amazing. It's not, well, I want this job so I can buy some stuff on Amazon or, or at Walmart or something like this. It's at least to help their family. But given this is the healthcare sector, so many of them, I want to give back to the community. I feel called to go and help the community in these ways. So you're, you, what an example. You have people that have so much less than we do. Some of these people, other cities, I just pulled one for Springdale, living in an RV with kids, trying to go to class. I mean, it's just incredible stuff that if someone would just give them a chance. So that's what this is about. Sorry for the tears, but it's a real, these are real people we're talking about. So I'll stop, but this is the last page here. As far as the, the program piece is the 884,000 dollars, the infrastructure support is 2 million. So that, the ask is, is the 2.9, if you will. You can see what the, the wage implications are and what the ROI is for the city. So with that, I'll, sorry if that was both fast and long, but if you have questions, bring them on.
All right, thanks Jeff. And Dr. Rollins did come in. Doc, if you'd like to add anything or any, anyone?
First of all, this is beautiful. This is Springdale on the move. It's a great place to meet, isn't it, Mayor?
Yeah.
Forty years ago, I had the opportunity to come to Springdale. At that time, we had about five or 6,000, maybe 7,000 children in our schools. Today, we have 23,000 children in our schools, which is a great response to the fastest growing community in our state. And that growth continues. And personally, I think we see a resurgence of that growth all along the way. Part of the offshoot of the growth, not just in our community, in our region, but across the nation, is that when you experience growth, you see increases in poverty. I think the thing that is just overwhelming, and you saw Jeff overwhelmed by even a presentation that, that he's poured his heart into bringing forward so he could tell the story. And really a story that we all understand. Growing community, a community that's increasing in poverty. Our schools today are more than 70% impoverished. So what is our answer? Every leader, every servant leader, I expect in every community in the country is looking for an answer to that. And from at least a very biased point of view, I think education is the answer. You educate, you prepare individuals and families to do quality work, to command a higher salary. You bring their economy forward and in the process, you bring the economy of their community, their city, our state forward in the process. Well, I was introduced to Upskill. I can tell you, from my point of view, I thought it was the best model that perhaps I'd ever seen in terms of what might we do to break this generational poverty issue? To bring, do it in a positive way, to bring improvement forward, to prepare people to earn quality wages and commensurate with that is so often an improvement in the quality of life. So I have an opportunity to work with my son daily. I'm more in a coaching role, Mayor, than actually working with him. But as you know, he works with the council. And he's looking at what's happening in the growth sector, in the economic sector of our community. He understands the job development, he understands where the jobs are. And so I'm very privileged to have a teacher at the table with me and I try to learn. Jeff gave an interesting number. If, if you look regionally, and I want to put things in context, Jeff's already done a wonderful job of doing that, maybe I can support it just a little bit. The context for NWTI is we serve what's referred to as middle skill development students. Students who've earned a high school degree, but they've not yet earned a college degree. So they're somewhere in the middle, they're somewhere in between. Our programs serve really happy kids. Wonderful young people who are pursuing a trade that they have chosen. They choose to be in our school, nobody makes them come, they choose to be there. They love the personalized learning, they love the fact that they're learning a skill that in fact will lead them to a very positive career path. The first numbers I saw, just in terms of new job growth in the last year, was about 8,500 new jobs that were being created in the medical community. And you might think, well, he's stuck on eights. 80% of that 8,500 new jobs were in this middle skill area. And it just seemed to make a lot of sense to me. I, I like to draw graphs and illustrations and so forth. And again, I'm just trying to add to what Jeff's already said. If you draw a triangle and you think of the base of the triangle as the entry level jobs. And then if you think of the walls of the triangle as you move upward to the apex, think of the jobs becoming more and more specialized as you move forward. The best doctors in the region, the best medical researchers in the region cannot do their jobs the way they want to do them if they don't have a good support system around them. So it made sense to me to use an illustration like that. And it's helped me understand the power of the work that's going on at NWTI. We're preparing those entry level workers, those students who on graduates, upon graduation come in and they may take the LPN jobs, they may take the surge tech jobs, they may be certified nursing assistants, they may be emergency workers. They may be coding specialists to deal with the paramedical records that come through the process. We have a wonderful niche to really make a difference in our community. Our staff knows that. Phenomenal teachers who are absolutely there just to serve the students, et cetera. Okay, that's background information. Okay, that's background information. How does that fit into this plan? A year and a half or so ago, when I took the reins at NWTI, there were two things that I was really focused on. I'd read report after report, Mayor, that city officials had participated in, our chambers of commerce had participated in, our industry leaders. I was fascinated that NWTI was a focal point in each of those reports. And there were seven or eight of them, and they were well-done. So I knew that the heart of our work was to respond to the growing industry needs in our region. To be even more specific, as we're focused on the medical community, you look at this burgeoning medical community, and we are becoming a medical destination without question. So to help our professionals at the highest level, obviously, we need upskilling, we need middle-skill development. And so when I had an opportunity to visit with Jeff earlier, we, we had the vestiges of the medical building coming forward, but we had yet to develop the program at the level that Jeff introduced to me, Jeff and Justin and others. This is a difference maker. First person that I went to visit with after Jeff and I had met was our mayor. We've had the privilege to work together for probably more years than anybody wants to count, but 15 or so or more, maybe it looks more like 20 today.
Yeah, more like 20.
But I, I'd love to get his feedback, his input. I, I wanted to see his first reaction, and it was just as positive as mine was, without question. How do you break the chain of poverty? You do it through quality education. And when you do it through a school like NWTI with students who want to be there, are going to come and give their best effort every day, you've got a chance to make a real difference. So here's a medical community that's really coming forward in a major way. A destination plays for our region, for our state, frankly, for the nation. It will be that as we come forward. We've got to make sure that we've got an emerging plan that supports the growth so it can reach the potential that it wants, that we all want to see happen. So we were turning out about 100 paramedical workers a year with the existing facilities that we have now. And the workplace was asking not for 100, but 200, 300, and growing. And so, yes, I said to Jeff, we're at capacity. We understand the need, but we're going to have to be forward-looking, we're going to have to build partnerships, we're going to have to do this together in order to develop the right plan, the sophisticated plan that will really meet our needs, the plan that can be financed through partnerships where there's wins on all sides. And so we began to walk down that path. Our mayor didn't just meet with me once. Councilman, he met with me many, many times, and Jeff joined us, and we began to build understanding together. This, again, in my opinion, has the potential to really begin to break this generational poverty piece. Investing in our people is always a good decision. And so I think the plan that's been brought forward is balanced. It builds partnerships, we've involved the medical community at all levels, the programs that are coming forward is, again, you've heard already, addresses the middle-skill piece, but keep in mind, NWAQ is an important part of this decision as well. Both facilities are right here in our community that are growing and expanding, and NWAQ will continue to do their very best effort to grow service and, and prepare more and more RNs and et cetera. So this has been a partnership effort where we've all taken a look at it, we've had our input, and we've got a great plan, and we, we just need to bring the partners together who understand what we're trying to accomplish and serve our people at the highest level we can. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have for me. And thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins.
And this, this program, after five years, can be applied to other occupations, and I love that aspect.
Amelia, let me tell you this story. I lo- I love this one, too. I only have a couple that I tell. Tell the triangle story, Jeff. But I got to tell you this. We were meeting with the medical community, we brought one group after another in. Shannon Hendricks and her, her group from Children's came to visit with me, and we were having a work session a lot like this, and we were talking about partnerships and how we could bring this forward together. And she's wonderful, by the way, her team's phenomenal. And she simply said, "Dr. Rollins, we'll help you any way in the world, build partnerships to better prepare our paramedic workers, we need them all." And then she stood up when she said this, and she said, "I want you to understand, we're also very interested in your welders. We're very interested in your information technology people. We're very interested." And she just went through ammonia refrigeration, HVAC, et cetera. And to me, that was such a rewarding comment personally, because there was two things, as president of the school, that was really on my mind. I wanted us to meet the growing needs of the medical industry, yes. But I wanted to do something that could positively improve and help grow the positive image of NWTI. A facility like this, located right on Highway 265, with good access, good vision for everybody, captured the spirit of what Shannon was saying. It will not only help us in the medical area, but it will help us improve every trade in the school and attract students there. So yes, exactly what you're saying, exactly what Shannon was saying as well.
Thank you.
Dr. Rollins and I have talked about this a lot, and, and certainly Jeff, and, and I'm, I'm just very excited for this, and I've been anxious for us to be able to bring it forward. And you guys did a great job, thank you for the, for the presentation. And again, we'll have hard copies of this for, for the council. Or we'll put it in your Dropbox either way. But I got a question maybe for Cody. The, we're being asked, the, the ask is for just under 900,000 for programming. And again, that's based on our, our, what our rescue plan funding was. Other, the other large cities are being asked an amount based on their rescue plan money, as, as have both counties. And all that money will stay with Springdale students. All the money that Springdale gives will stay with Springdale students. Springdale's being asked for another, an additional 200, $2 million. And that's obvious because we've, we're receiving the benefit of the, of the, of the expansions to both NWAQ and NWTI. You can imagine that, how, how we would respond if, if NWAQ in Bentonville was expanding, and they asked us for capital for their, for their building. First of all, we, we probably wouldn't approve it, and probably legally, we couldn't, e- even if we wanted to. So, so that's the reason for the 2 million. Washington County, Jeff, you said, has already approved their 1 million. And their programming portion. Okay? Gotcha. All right. Cody, my question for you is, you have been working with DRS most closely, you, between you and Colby, on the, on how this resolution, or I guess my question is, are we talking about one resolution, do you think, based on what you know so far? Or would we be talking about two resolutions, one for programming and one for the bricks and mortar? Go, go to the mic, please. So the, we got, we got, Doc, you may not even know this, we've got like, I think, three council members on Zoom tonight, so.
It'd be, more likely be one resolution, it'd be considered like a sub-recipient award, where we have an agreement, you know, with, with them, and then they have reporting to do to us and things like that, kind of like what we did similar with the NWI council.
The feedback you've gotten from DRS so far in working with them on preparation, have they, have they given you any red flags?
No red flags have come up yet. They're, they're supposed to, and I let them know if they had asked of us, you know, what is it, and they haven't come back with anything yet. So I think they're, they're combing through all the, all the detail stuff, but there haven't been any flags yet. And it, it should fit right in, because it's going towards the training of the medical field, and that's one of the primary things for the ARPA funding.
Okay. So for the committee, Amelia, for the committee, I don't want to get ahead of any more questions, because there may be more questions. I, I hope there are, but, but we're in the same situation, sort of, as far as having a resolution written as we are with the, with the police equipment we just approved. So we're not asking you all to approve a resolution tonight, because we don't have one ready. It could be ready next week, it could be another three weeks. You know, hopefully, we're going to push DRS very hard, and they'll, but, but we don't want them to make a mistake either, we want to be sure they get it right. But I, I think if we could, what, what I would hope to have tonight is, is just the, the assurance that based on what you know and what, what you've heard tonight, that we're, we're going in a direction that, that would be very, very well-accepted on this council. And I, I hope, I hope you can, can get there. If not, take a couple of weeks, and we'll, we'll handle it later. But, but this is, I, I've had a lot longer to look at this than you all have, and I realize that, and I want to give you plenty of time. Anyone in the room or on Zoom, do you have any questions for, for Jeff or for Dr. Rollins or for anyone else?
This is Kevin, I got some questions. And the, the camera's not up in the chamber, so I'll just start with, with the city. How much balance do we have in ARPA funds at this time before this?
Can you hear me? I hit a button here, so hopefully this works. You got about 9.25 million, and we have another 10.6 coming in just a few months. And this is money that has to be allocated and totally completely spent, Cody, I think, is by 2026, but it has to be allocated by 2024. So we have less than two years to allocate the remaining, almost $20 million.
I guess I should have started by saying this is an awesome project that, that I support. I was just curious on that part. And then the, the second question I got is, have, have we approached any other cities? I know, I know we mentioned that the county has approved this, I foresee us approving this, have we?
Jeff, where are we at with Benton County and the other cities?
Yeah. So, so everybody has a different process, that's kind of no problem on that. But, so Benton County, February 3rd, we'll be sitting down with the full quorum court. I've talked with, I think, eight of the 15 JPs, of which I think seven of eight are all pretty excited and, and supportive, as they've said. So feel good about Benton County. Mayor Hines, as you remember, was on a budget meeting or something, and couldn't be at that big meeting I described. We sat down with him in December. When he understood what he said, what this whole thing was, he said, "We'll absolutely be on board with that." We're starting with their finance committee, the, their chair, I will meet with tomorrow on that, so we're rolling through that. Bentonville, we've already sent a contract over there, and they're just asking questions around how would this work, sub-grantee with us, et cetera. Mayor Jordan, you'll remember, he had questions as far as, well, am I buying something in Springdale, or, no, 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 how does this work? So we've caught back up with him, we've met with Steve Clark. Steve Clark said, "I think Mayor Jordan's going to be your biggest supporter on this whole thing," so feel good about that. You know, we, we crashed into the end of the year, and just everybody was at a different place. So we'd anticipate, like Fayetteville, that we'll meet with them, probably the first meetings on the front end of February. So we haven't had anybody say that we're not interested in doing this. You know, everybody does what they need to do, you got to make sure it works for your specific people that you all represent. But then I think they also look at this whole thing from a regional standpoint as well, so, so yeah.
And, and, and one of the main reasons I'm really asking is, is to see what type of motion to put forward, in part just to instill confidence in the other cities that obviously we support this. So whether to move forward with a motion of recommendation, or just with no recommendation at all, or, or just table this to, you know, until it happens to get a little more clear.
Good question. I mean, would, Jeff, is there a, would there be a benefit in your conversations with other cities if the council took a more, obviously, they can't, they can't forward a resolution they haven't seen. But, but if they took a more concrete position on this?
Yeah, it for sure naturally does, because it's the human nature that we all have, is, well, what's everybody else going to do type thing? So even, I mean, it was a big deal having Washington County say, "We're in." I think people hearing and understanding that you guys are in as well is going to be...
I'm kind of upset Washington County got ahead of us, really, but, but that's okay.
So I, absolutely, it's helpful. And, you know, I communicate, like if I was talking with Rogers, I'd say, "Here's where people are, they're pretty affirmative," or something like that. But, you know, affirmative versus definitive is, is kind of two different words, so, yeah.
Yeah.
I've got a couple of questions, this is Randall. Who, who's responsible for the oversight of the training program? Is that NTI, or is that the, your foundation, or who does that? And two, who is overseeing the, the construction and, and does all that, given to, given money from, you know, this foundation to a government entity? I didn't, I just don't know how all that works.
Yeah. So a couple of things. So, you know, our Upskill organization, which I ran so fast through the front end of that, so Carol is our president of that. And as a, as a foundation, we said, you know, you start out by, what do foundations usually make, do we make grants? And, well, like, where's the Upskill organization here in Northwest Arkansas that we can make the grant to? Well, it doesn't exist. So we said, all right, well, we'll create this, we'll kind of incubate it inside our foundation, and then we'll set it out. But right now, we bring a lot of our foundation resources to help. But Carol's piece, as that one diagram showed, is really pulling pieces together. So Upskill itself is not the educator. So depending on which program people are in, the education itself would either happen at NWTI with NWAQ, and UAMS is part of this as well. So UAMS additionally. So it just depends on what curriculum the, the student's in, so that, who, who does the training. Then your other question was the actual construction. When we hit construction, then that would be NWTI doing that piece and NWAQ doing that piece, and not so much our foundation. And another question you had, maybe just, you know, there's lots of ways you can do things, but just kind of replicating, so you know. They just did one single resolution at Washington County for both the capital, et cetera, to Upskill, and then, you know, we give away money, we're not trying to make money, right? So, so then we just, we'll turn around and make that distribution, so, if that helps at all.
All right. Good.
And, and all right, my third question actually has something to do with Randall's. So we talked about keeping Springdale money with Springdale students. What, what's the definition of a Springdale student in this scenario?
Yeah, so that's based on where they live, so it'd be literally zip code-based. So think of that much like you guys would do a CBDG grant or something like that, where it's got to be based on where they live, their actual zip code, if you will. A question you could ask is just, well, who's going to keep this stuff straight and everything like this? You may not know, but for, for Benton County, all of their EIA, ERA, separate rental support money, we are the sub-grante in that sense. So we've had over 2,000 people, over 13.5 million dollars person, by person, by person. We got to keep all that straight. Same thing, that's, that happens to be Benton County can't come south, et cetera. So you got to keep all those things straight, all the federal reporting, all the federal audits, we're doing all of that stuff for Benton County. So we're confident we could do that, you know, and play that role here, too. It's, it's kind of similar.
So how, how do you, how do you get the word out to, if somebody doesn't know how, you know, I, they don't have, maybe they're the single mom out there, they don't know what's available to them, how are you marketing, marketing this to get the word out to those individuals?
So, so I'll say a couple of things, but I think Carol should talk here, too, because she's at the center of this. But so you know, as we started, because we said we're going to get the first 100 in this program, our HARC organization and its same income band type people we're talking about, we've helped over 10,000 people in Northwest Arkansas. So we somewhat start with that, but then we go to other organizations, like we have seven Marshalee students now in the program, so we'll talk with Melissa or that group, we'll talk with St. James Baptist Church, big African-American group, you know, down in Fayetteville. It just, there's different organizations. But let me have Carol talk with us about this, because she's been on, on the front line and touching these people one by one. So, Carol.
Thank you. And thank you very much, Mayor Sprouse, and city council members. It's wonderful to be here, talking about a program we're so passionate about. Amelia, that's a great question, and I'll tell you, it's a very intentional and high-touch outreach and engagement plan. So we look at it on a couple of different dimensions. One is telling the story of Upskill.
One is telling the story of upskill, what, who we are, what model we're based on. And we go out and talked, we talked to every single one of our educational partners to their students to say, "Hey, do you happen to know anybody who's interested in that? Do you have friends? Do you..." So we've got tons of recommendations. We had about three hundred and fifteen applicants that were in consideration for one hundred roles, one hundred places. And so you can imagine the due diligence it took to be able to examine each applicant and, and their stories and their eligibility and all of those things, put them through the process that Jeff mentioned. So we do that. At the educational institutions, we also go out to the community, to our partners out there. Eldon Alec, who many of you know as Mr. Council General, is just phenomenal. In fact, at one point, I mean, I think to have seven percent of our upskill participants be Marshallese is really amazing, and it's because of him. Because at some point, as you all know, Springfield, I'm sorry, Springdale is this tapestry of diversity. You've got the Laos community here, you've got the Marshallese community, you've got Latinos of all different countries and nationalities here. And with my previous role as building outreach and engagement strategies in the community, I was really familiar with some of those key players. So bringing Eldon to the table to say, "Hey, let me explain what this is," or Melissa Leilan, speaking and working directly with her, but taking that systematic approach with all of these organizations, whether it was the Single Parents Scholarship Fund, or it was, I'm trying to think somebody else that's going, I mean, I'm having conversations right now with Dress for Success. So it's individual, personal stories and information. And then we took the other kind of approach, which was social media marketing. So understanding what the greatest needs were, that we had eight different roles that needed to be filled. So we created marketing in Spanish, Marshallese in English. We targeted the specific roles. And so we, we really took this multi-pronged approach and found our one hundred amazing participants. So, great, thanks.
What are you doing, I would assume, I know NWTI as well as NWAQ, y'all certainly have connections with the school districts, with the private schools, so that would all also be an avenue for...
Yes, sir.
Information on this.
Well, and I was, I'm a former pre-K teacher with the Springdale Public Schools, and I know that through that process, and I met many, many families that would fit perfectly with a program like this. And I think that, you know, being able to reach out to those families at the beginning of the year, when you have those orientations and things like that, to let them know that this exists, you know, might be a benefit.
Wonderful, yes.
Great, great recommendation, and definitely on our plan. Any other questions?
Let me, let me, thank you.
Yes.
Amelia, let me try and just put, throw out a suggestion. I think, in light, and it was a question I hadn't really thought of until Kevin brought it up, about other cities and Benton County. And, I mean, we should be leading this. It's, it's in our community. If, if it, when it's done, these facilities will be in our community. So I would ask that, that, that we, we consider a motion to forward this to the next city council meeting after a resolution is ready. And, and I, I would, I would hope you could put a recommendation for approval on it. If not, well, let's, let's at least get it forwarded so it doesn't need to come back to committee. Once the resolution is prepared, then we can bring it straight to a city council meeting.
Well, I tell you, I'm ready to break ground now. So I would like to go ahead and forward this recommendation with no recommendation of approval pending a resolution for...
Did you say with no recommendation of approval?
Until we get the resolution written. Is that what we're want, is that what you were? I want to, I want to get this thing.
You could put a recommendation on it if you want.
I want to get this thing forwarded.
The only thing the resolution is going to do is nail down where the money's going to come from, basically. So if you're, if you're, if you're in, if you're in support of the concept, you could move it forward with a recommendation, if you're comfortable.
Right. I'm definitely, and I just want to make sure that we follow the proper protocol we need to make sure that we get this.
Yeah, for DRS. Would that be any issue that you'd think, Cody, if it was forwarded with a recommendation for approval?
Right, okay. Then I would revise that and forward a recommendation of approval.
I'd second.
Okay. And that, just to clarify, that's at the, the first council meeting after the resolution is prepared, right? Is there a better way to say that? Yeah, basically, it doesn't have to come back to committee. So it could be, could be next Tuesday, or it could be the following.
Yeah, this, this one should not have as much scrutiny as the others. I think this one can be done pretty quick, but we can, we can have it forwarded as soon as the resolution is completed. That way, we can put it on the next council agenda without coming to committee.
Okay.
If that works for you.
So Jeff, if this, if this passes, when you go to the other cities, as you talk with other cities, it, if it hasn't gone to council yet, it has been passed from the committee to the council with a recommendation for approval?
Well, not yet, but...
But not yet. If, I'd say if it's approved tonight, if this is approved tonight.
Mayor, Mayor, one other thing we can do is, as soon as this resolution is provided to us from DRS, we'll go ahead and put it in the Dropbox and send out an email to the council. We won't, we won't just wait till the agenda's ready. We'll go ahead and put it, because it could be this week, in the next few days. We'll get it to you as soon as we get it.
Great.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to forward this to council with a recommendation for approval. Any other...
So I, I'm really not comfortable with moving this forward simply upon a presentation being on the agenda tonight. There was no indication that there would be action taken on this. This is all new to me. I don't know if it's new to the rest of y'all. I'm not saying by any means, I don't think it's, sounds wonderful, I just don't, I'm just not sure it's appropriate for us to be forwarding to council with recommendation for approval tonight. And so if we are going to vote, which I guess we are since the motion's been made, I'm not going to vote no, because I don't want to indicate that I'm against it, but I'm not going to vote yes, because I just don't think it was ripe for action. It's all new to everybody. I hate to spend three million dollars without knowing more about it. And so I will not be voting. I'll, I'll simply not vote. I'll vote present.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to forward this to council with recommendation for approval. There's not any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Thank you. Thank you very much.
And this, this pretty much just lets our, Northwest Arkansas know that we are one hundred percent behind this.
Right, you'll still have, obviously, at council, if there are other questions, whenever this comes to council. If there are other questions, obviously, those will be, those will be dealt with then.
But I hope this is a tool that y'all could take to the others. So what, what is the timetable, Jeff?
To say everything works out perfect?
Starting the buildings at NWAQ, starting the buildings at NTI.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's the, if you're, especially as the, well, from the program side, we're rolling.
Right.
On the Capitol side, it's just locking in all these different pieces. So our piece is locked, right? And Washington County's piece is locked, so that's a million. You know, this piece would be another two million. I think we will know by the end of January on at least half of the philanthropy part, if not both of them, but for sure by one of those. And then we've got more conversations with the, with the state on that piece. Again, Dr. Rollins and I have had multiple meetings, two meetings last week, and there's another call tomorrow I need to tell you about, following up with them again. And then we're looking at, are there some creative ways that I also haven't talked with you about, just for the foundation to help get things started and rolling? So it's a little hard for me to pin that down, because certainly no one's going to break ground if there's not certainty on the Capitol part. But, so it's a little hard for me to specifically answer that, but...
Hopefully this year.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Sorry. In that sense, I can say that, yes. Yeah. It's just kind of which quarter is a little hard to say that for sure. And I'd say right now, the biggest uncertainty a little bit is that, is the timing of the state, which could end up being the summer, but then, again, we're going to try and look at, are there some creative ways to accelerate that? Yeah. Hopefully that helps.
Okay, with that, I will close Finance Committee.
I believe we're adjourned. Thank you all. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Thanks, have a good evening.